I haven't done a show in quite a while, and it's mainly because I've been working so hard on this issue affecting so many parents across America of being targeted by the weaponized DOJ under Merrick Garland during the Biden administration. Of course, I've talked about this a lot. I've written about this quite a bit. So, welcome back. I'm gonna try to do my show more frequently. We also just moved across town and got into a better place. Our lives have been, as many parents have been, all about recovering from these attacks, restoring their life, liberty, and happiness that they enjoyed before they were attacked. Now, I've had the privilege of meeting Jeremy Klepper. He's a father down in Gainesville, Florida, and he's made national news now, which I'm happy to say, for standing up and speaking truth at a school board, speaking his opinion, exercising his First Amendment rights. Jeremy, I say I'm happy for you, but with mixed feelings because I know that whenever you're in the public eye, you get attacked by some really unbalanced radical people. But welcome to Freedom Talk. I want to welcome you first of all. Maybe tell us a little bit about yourself and what's gone on over the past week that's been life-changing for you and your family.
Sure, yeah. Thank you, first off, for having me. Again, my name's Jeremy Klepper. I live in outskirts of Gainesville in Jonesville, close to Newbury. I'm just a plumbing contractor. I do service plumbing and take care of that in my family, pretty much my main concerns. So, when this came up, bashing loved ones and friends and hitting close to home, it was just something that ate at me and ate at me. And finally, just decided that I had to go speak at the upcoming school board, and here we are.
Yeah, and I'm gonna play that video. Sarah Rockwell is the Chair of the Alletoa County School Board. She gained some publicity recently for saying this about Hulk Hogan. When she said this, Jeremy, how did this affect you? Because you must have been aware of it before you went into the school board meeting.
Sure, yeah. You know, I'm not a diehard Hulk Hogan fan. When I was a kid, obviously, it was fun to watch. But when she took it to the point of, "Good, one less MAGA in the world," you know, that's a lot of people around me. Like I said, we're on the outside of the city, out in the country. I live out here on some property. It's just to say that about half of your constituents and half the country, to be vague, I would say probably more than half. It's just kind of crazy whenever you are the head of a school board where you're supposed to be really nonpartisan and just show your love for everybody. You know, whenever I was a kid, it wasn't like that, or it was like that, where people just cared for everyone. I didn't know anything about my teachers as far as that went, and that was great. They cared for everyone, no matter what shape, color, size you were. It didn't matter. And that's what I want to see get back. That's what I want to see get back. I definitely don't want to see hateful ideology coming from a school board, a teacher, let alone the head of the school board. It's just completely mind-blowing.
Most of us, we see people as people. Unfortunately, the left tends to try to bring us back 150 years, back to the 1960s. They try to portray our society as incredibly racist and oppressive, and it's just, it's a destructive ideology. And when we had our business down in Tucson, our coffee shop, we had people of all colors and stripes and beliefs come in, and it's just, you don't make that the center of attention. It's just people. You call them by first name. One thing, Jeremy, that I found really encouraging, that frankly, I'm just gonna be honest and say, I wish more government officials would do this. July 31st is when you were at the school board meeting criticizing, critiquing Rockwell, holding her to account for what she said. You were removed by police for expressing what would be called a conservative viewpoint. Now, what, three days later, Florida Commissioner of Education Anastasios Komatsas wrote a letter. Tell us about that letter and how that made you feel, because this, talk about a strongly worded letter.
Very strongly worded letter. And three days would be impressive if that letter came in, but it was actually out by noon the next day, the school board had that letter. So, the meeting happened. It started, I think it was supposed to start at 6:00, and then they changed it to like 5:00. So, I spoke probably close to 6:00 PM, and by noon the next day, the school board had that letter, and it was hitting all the media outlets and word-of-mouth groups around here within an hour or two of that. So, absolutely incredible. It just shows you how many people are actually paying attention to this and how fed up people are with the progressives pushing this hateful ideology. And them being that comfortable to speak that way, it's just incredible. I hope you post a picture or link to that letter because it's absolutely beautiful.
We have a Parents Demanding Justice Alliance page on realfreedomtalk.com. I'll definitely put that letter up there. And Jeremy, you might not know this, but I sent out a media release today that included excerpts from the letter. I posted the entirety of the letter on social media, and I sent that to members of the media, to government officials, to people who can and should help on this. What I really liked about the letter was it wasn't just a strongly worded letter. It was action. Tell our audience what actions the Florida Commissioner of Education took, because this, I mean, I want you to say it because it's so great.
I mean, a couple of them. One is he is withholding the pay equal to the entire school board until this gets straightened out, questing Rockwell's attendance at an upcoming meeting on the 20th in St. Augustine to answer for her actions.
What a personal responsibility.
Yes, personal responsibility. So, he said that he saw that she has a teaching certificate, and he strongly advised her to not reapply to recertify that certificate because he will, in fact, not grant that recertification, which is great because someone that shows that level of hate openly deserves no place in our school system. He told the board that they need to consider her place on the board. I think it's more than a suggestion withholding their pay. So, it's more than I could have ever dreamed of, and like you said, the action call is really what hits. Not ju, it's not just talk to action. Exactly like you said, it's beautiful.
He accused her of publicly humiliating you and warned the board that this had created a chilling effect on all parents with similar beliefs. And that language of a chilling effect is something that has been used a lot with this targeting parents issue, that they try to intimidate parents. And it chills free speech. It makes people afraid to speak out.
But when the DOJ releases the memo, and I think even more importantly, the press statement, I think that it does have a chilling effect on parents being willing to go and express their concerns with the direction the school board's going, when all of a sudden you think that your words and this list of crimes that the department has sent, I guess, to at least the state of Montana, others, it could have a chilling effect on people who legitimately have a concern they want to express it, but now they may think that they come crosswise with the FBI. So, I do believe that it will have a chilling effect on people whose right they have to go in, express their concerns, like Loudoun County, a ridiculous overreach. I think that it will have that effect because the full force of the FBI is now something a parent has to think about before they go before a school board meeting to express their concerns, and they get frustrated. Like I said, they've been raucous for decades, and they will be raucous for decades to come. So, I do, I really do believe that you should seriously consider rescinding, revising a statement out there that concerns me for the parents that I want to show up to school board meetings and have the school boards held accountable. The other thing that we should talk about are the numerous examples of school board members getting caught saying audacious things. It's one thing you've seen over the past year. Think about some provocative statements that they said. They thought they were behind closed doors, but they were on the internet, basically ridiculing parents and pretending like they had ball control over their children's education and their future. We've got to get more parents engaged, and I think that the effect of the DOJ action is the exact opposite of that.
I've had people comment that it reminded them a lot of, and I'm talking about people who've experienced it, things that were done in Cambodia and during the days of Mao Zedong, just really silencing anyone who dares to oppose you.
And kind of watching you a little bit since June, when you went up to the mic at the Loudoun County School Board and had some strong words to say about trends that you were seeing that reminded you of something you experienced back in China, the Cultural Revolution, in fact.
I grew up in Communist China, and I left China for America when I was 26. That's the reason he started the Cultural Revolution, to basically remove his political enemies and a political enemy up and down. The Red Guards were mainly school kids.
So, they, okay, since you said the mass involved, like just like kind of the masses, right, to basically employ them in his quest? So, and the Red Guards, how were they indoctrinated?
Well, that started from day one. So, as soon as the CCP took over power in 1949, one of the first things they did is to get all the schoolteachers together because they were the teachers of the old China. So, they were giving intensive Communist training. They are to teach now the Marxist and Communist values and ideologies. So, ever since then, the educational system is indoctrination meal, ever since then. But it was during the Cultural Revolution that we get to see the full display of what those indoctrinated kids were able to do, were capable of. And they just chanted Mao's slogan, "Rebellion is justified." And Mao said, "Revolution is not dinner party, and it is violent. So, go ahead, do your revolution." So, with Mao's approval, no one could stop them. So, the first thing they did is they dismantled the law enforcement and the court system. So, they just did whatever. They even make up their own laws. So, one of the things they were told is get rid of those people in authority. And so Mao told the Red Guards and everybody, "We should get rid of the four Ods, the old ideas, old thoughts, and old tradition, old custom, and old habits." What are they? They are the traditional culture and civilization. So, for you to get rid of it is to find historic places such as temples and anything, basically anything old. So, all the Buddhist statues were torn down, temples destroyed or burned, and cancel culture just, also, they demand that you can't wear a certain hairstyle. You can't wear anything that is kind of fashionable. All this is condemned. It's absolutely madness.
What led you to speak at that school board meeting?
It just, man, it just ate at me. It ate at me. I have a lot of time in my own mind working. I have a helper, but you know, it's me working. I have a lot of time in my mind, and I just, it just ate at me and ate at me and ate at me, and I went back and forth on it. I'm not a public speaker. As a lot of people point out, that this was my first meeting that I attended. You know, I do a lot for my community. When I see things that need to be done, I'll just do it out of my own pocket, out of my own family's pocket, my own time. It's just something that I do as I see needed. Now, I can't focus on every topic out there, everywhere in the world, but whenever I see something immediate that I can have a good change on, I'll act on it. And this was a time that I saw that I could go out and speak my mind. There's been people trying to speak out in this town before, and they were absolutely demolished. I've had so many people that have reached out to me and said that they've tried the same thing, and they just didn't have the support, and they've been working for years. Some of these people, over five years now in this town, fighting this school board, and I had no idea. My son's young. We're just getting into this school system. We live here, but he's, like I said, just starting out in this school system. So, it's really just now coming to my attention how they're acting, and it's just, it was something that I had to do. And it's amazing the amount of support out there from people like you and just the amazing amount of people here local as well that are just in my corner and ready to do anything to fix this, to get this county back where it needs to be.
Yeah, absolutely. And so much of your story resonates with you. I know I've shared this dossier of just some of the stories of parents across the country. None of us really, I think, maybe some do, but none of us want retribution. We don't want to see people hurt, but we do want personal responsibility. And there's an incredible hypocrisy here because some of us, like me, results of standing up and speaking my mind, I was never violent, nor were you. I got cancel cultured out of the job, had my business destroyed mercilessly, mocked, doxxed, threatened, slandered in the media, defamed. The hypocrisy is that someone like Sarah Rockwell can say something so vile, and it's okay if she just apologizes. We didn't get to apologize. You were treated very unfairly in contrast to how Sarah Rockwell was treated. It seems that anybody of a certain ideology on the left that likes transgenderism, CRT, everything else, they can do no wrong. I didn't see anything wrong. You did. You're a big guy like me. In fact, you're taller than I am. I'm 6'4", 240 pounds, like 6'6".
6'6", 250, so they body shamed me for being a big guy, that I'm being aggressive because I'm big. Like, nah, I just ate my vegetables, kids.
Yeah, I love that when you talked about that, and you said body shaming. I'm gonna use it. I'm gonna steal that from you.
You have to use their lingo. You have to use their lingo so that they understand. Otherwise, they, even with PhDs, apparently don't understand language, so.
And when I watched that video, somebody said something which is so telling. They said something like, "Your speech is literally violent," or something like that. That's what they, they look at that, and they also look at you if you're a large male, and I'll just say a large white male, because a friend of mine is John Amunchukwu. He's our, like, former football player. He's black, and we've talked about it openly. Why did it take you so long to get arrested when I was arrested twice at the drop of a hat? And says, "Because I'm black." You know, there are these levels of intersectionality. And so, this lady in the back, she's black, elderly, who knows what else, but she's high on that intersectionality, totem pole. I was just shocked. A little shocks me anymore, but the way she took over that meeting, she did exactly what she was accusing you of. She dared to call you these names, and you can tell us what she called you. Who was that woman, and why did she get privileges you didn't have? I didn't see anyone invite her to speak, but I did see a microphone handed to her. Can you unpack that a little bit?
So, yeah, that was Faye Williams that you see whenever you show this video toward the end, where she doesn't grab the mic. Actually, one of our Gainesville City Commissioners, Casey Willetts, took the microphone and handed it to her to amplify her rage. Yes, sir, that's him. Just crazy that he felt the need to do that. But yeah, that's Faye Williams. She's a local activist. I think she's been all over this country, has tons of followers, goes off on rants. But calling me a racist and a white supremacist, making another video the next morning stating that she thought I was going to slap Sarah Rockwell, which is insane. She said that I was committing verbal violence, that I actually committed physical violence, that what I said was physical violence. Again, these people, they either do not know language or they're, you know. So, that was incredible that I just got called all of these names for simply stating an opinion that had nothing to do with race whatsoever.
Pull up that follow-up, parts of that follow-up video that she did, and I had posted publicly, "You need an apology at the very least." And this woman should have a trespass order or some sort of order of protection placed upon her because she was very hostile.
That's all I can say. A horrible man. Who really just stood up and said some things that, you know, I guess it was part of his free speech. But at the end, he called Sarah a bitch and called her a lot of-
Did you call her a bitch? Because I failed to hear that.
I didn't say a single cuss word in any time while I was in that building.
And you called her a despicable human being, which is part of free speech, and she called you a horrible man. So, there's an equivalence there. You don't get free speech, she gets free speech. Let me continue that.
Names. That was called name-calling. And it was the black woman in the back who objected to that. And we stood up and told him goodbye to not interrupt our meeting. And they had the sheriffs in there, and they went to him and told him he had to leave.
So, this lady, and she, her self-described black woman in the back, did they have any authority in the meeting? Were they running it? Are they part of the board?
They, well, they said it's their meeting. She said, "Get out of our meeting," so.
Right, but is she on the school board? Does she have authority?
She was another audience member, but she, her and this other woman she's talking about, they're strong activists for the blue side. She says in this video that you played, "Even when you're mad at Democrats, you gotta back them. It doesn't matter what they do, you gotta back them." And I don't know if it's nationwide or other cities or anything, but here in Gainesville, they say, "Back the blue, no matter who." And they print off thousands of little pamphlets and pass them out. They go door knocking before the elections and say, "This is who you're gonna vote for." They go through all the city-type residences and say, "This is who you're supposed to vote for."
Yeah, and a couple of things here, Jeremy. One is, I've seen this again and again for four or five years. These school districts will use the police as their personal security guards, and to do that, they violate their oaths because they're here to keep the peace, to protect and preserve the Constitution and citizens. They're not here to take marching orders from boards. So, and I've seen bad examples. I saw one good example where a section of the Pima County Sheriff's Department didn't interfere. They just said, "As long as nobody gets violent, they get to exercise their free speech." This woman's at least 70, 80 years old. Why the hell is she on the school board? Sam Sarbo is co-founder of Parents Demanding Justice Alliance, and you're gonna meet her if you haven't yet, but she says, "We should have parents on school boards," right? Is she on the board? Is she in the audience? I mean, if she's not on the board, she's acting like she is. Why is she there? She's obviously past childbearing age.
Obviously way past childbearing age. They're there because it was just a political ploy. That entire room was full leftists. That's all it was. They're all wearing the same color, purple. I don't know what, maybe the color purple, maybe that's why.
They're all activists. I mean, to your knowledge, just even have grandkids in the school.
I don't know anything personal about her. It's possible that she does. She didn't say anything at the meeting about having family there. I'm not sure about that.
But what I see is political operatives taking control of the meeting. So, let's play a little more.
He refused to leave.
Did you refuse to leave?
I asked the cop, I asked the cop if this was a public place.
But what I saw was that you did end up going with them until somebody said the district lawyer advises against it.
I did. Unfortunately, my wife and kid were homesick, so I did not want to take a trip downtown. So, I did not, I did not refuse to leave. All I did was question if this was a public place, and they, I stated I didn't want to go to jail, and so we left. The cops escorted me, took me out of my seat, and escorted.
You were about to leave, and I didn't see, I didn't see you resist that. I saw you question it. In fact, in my first arrest, I was more adamant. I said, "I have a right to speak." Like, I knew they were violating my civil rights. You, to me, when I saw it, and I think many people would say this, you were the only rational, peaceful person in the room. Yes, you expressed strong opinions, but you have a right to do that. You do. You have a right. And if a person's in a public position, you have the right to say, "You're despicable. Your actions were, you know, your actions should be condemned." So, I didn't see any reason for the police to interact with you at all unless you had actually been threatening. This lady's feelings don't play in, but she says something really interesting here in a minute.
And so, that bothered everybody. Everybody started shouting about him getting out of the meeting because he was in control, just like a white supremacist man, always trying to control a situation and what's happening in front of you.
Do you think white people are supreme to all other races?
No, no, I don't, no.
Are you, do you think all races are equal in terms of, you know, being created in the image of God and everything else?
For sure.
Okay, so I don't know where she gets this idea, and I have to say too, that we're a long way past mob rule. Democrats love mob rule. There's a story here that, actually, the courthouse where I live, they filmed Try That in a Small Town with Jason Meldin, and you know, the left went crazy about that. Oh, a young black man was hanged from that courthouse. Well, I did some digging. I wrote an article on the show about it. It was actually the Democrats who got the KKK together because they are the party of the KKK.
Certainly.
And they went to try to hang that young man, and the sheriff's wife, black and white people together, who at the time were known as populist, interesting enough, tried to defend him. So, we see again this attitude of mob rule. You're gonna be shouted down. We're gonna drag you out kicking and screaming. So, I don't even know if she realizes the tradition that she's glommed onto because she's gonna talk all about black people and black rights, but she's actually acting very much, well, racially prejudiced, but also very much like the KKK acted, like the Democrats acted back in the day of Jim Crow.
All she sees is through the lens of color, just like the Democrats always have. It's all through the lens of color, through the lens of sex, everything.
Yeah, I can't tell you how many times I've been called a white supremacist, Nazi, everything. Like, I speak Spanish. I taught on the border. I taught in Sri Lanka where everybody's brown and black. You know, I have friends of, you know, some of my students who are Muslim, and it's like, I am, like, don't insult me. That's not me at all. You're judging me by my outward appearance, not the content of my character.
Because when you have a violent man like that, I thought he was going to go up and slap Sarah, and that was not gonna happen.
So, in my trial for that second arrest, my lawyer, and I think I've told you this before, asked the principal if I had done anything, even taken a step toward her. And, you know, I sat the whole time. And then the prosecutor got up and said, "Do you feel like he could have done those things?" So, for them, feeling like somebody could potentially be violent, you know, just because you're a big man doesn't mean you're violent. You know, I hold my kids and caress them. I'm a very loving parent. I've helped people overseas. I've volunteered years of my life. But to her, if you're large and white, that's all it takes. That's you. You're a racist. You're a white supremacist. She knows nothing about you. They knew nothing about me. And she's about to say something that just blew my mind here in a second.
The thing about that, you know, it still goes back to race, and I know y'all don't want me to get on that race thing, but I'm a black woman. I will always talk about race. Otherwise, I would be crazy.
That blew my mind. I'm always gonna be talking about race, whether you want to hear it or not. I know you don't want to hear about it, but I'm gonna talk about it.
Always. It's the most important thing. Crazy.
This is nuts. I mean, this is nuts, and I would hope, you know, call me a cockeyed optimist here, but I would hope that even Democrats would look at this and say, "This is way out of the darkness of this ideology, like a mirror image." And it is racism. It's a mirror image of the way people used to treat black people, and really few, to none do anymore. And it's an ideology that is consistent across this, and it's extreme hypocrisy to use this on anybody, no matter their color.
And I'm not crazy.
Well, I would beg to differ.
If a black man or a black woman did the same thing within our meeting, we would have been dragged down and thrown out immediately.
Okay, so she's condemning the fact that a black man would have been removed. What an injustice that would have been. Why is it not an injustice for the same thing to happen to you? This is where I'm like, she's not even thinking rationally, okay?
Not at all.
If this is a bad thing to happen to a black man, why is it a good thing to happen to a white man? Who cares what their color is? If you're deprived of free speech and manhandled and dragged out, it's wrong. It's bad. Who cares what your color is?
She does.
The victim culture here is unbelievable.
So, why do you allow this white supremacist, and he was a white supremacist, to call, to do, continue to do name-calling?
And this is what they do. Speaking of name-calling, they label you, and they use that label to justify anything. The label justifies the means. Because you're a white supremacist, Jeremy, whether you know it or not, they can do anything. And that is the left's game all the time. Trump is Hitler, therefore, we can try to take him out. It's communism 101. It's Marxism 101. It really is.
I can't tell you how many friends have reached out and told me I'm the absolute worst white supremacist they've ever met.
I know people who are biracially married, who have, you know, half-black kids. I know people who are Asian, black, you name it, who've been called white supremacists. It's utterly ridiculous, and you know, this kind of talk needs to be condemned. And, you know, kudos to Florida Commissioner Komatsas. And I think this lady, you know, drill down on this. She needs to learn to behave in these meetings. If you're race-obsessed and you have a loud voice and you're gonna come there and disrupt, you need to sit it out for a while until you learn to behave civilly, honestly.
Before you even got him out the chair. I'm glad that we had the sheriff's office there, that three officers in the meeting. That was great.
Why are there three officers there? There were three officers when I got arrested the first time, simply for telling the truth about the county setting up our business. But I was glad when they got him out of the chair. What are these police officers doing? I don't say "back the blue," and we got targeted partly because our coffee shop held back the blue events. I say "back true blue" because there are good cops and bad cops. There are cops who are corrupt. There are cops who are order takers, who aren't gonna take a stand, and then there are really good cops who are gonna do the right thing. Like, after my first arrest, one of the sheriff's officers came by at the coffee shop with a lieutenant who was a patron, and he said, "We all know that arrest was wrong, Kelly. I would have quit my job. I don't need this job that much. I would have quit my job before making that arrest." So, yes, there are very good law enforcement. We're a law enforcement family. My son went through Corrections Academy, my oldest son.
The left hates the cops, right? They defund the police. I mean, they've rioted across the country to defund the police. But as soon as it's in their best interest, they will weaponize the justice system to go after whoever they see fit. You'll see in this video, they didn't hold anything back, and there was supervisors there. It wasn't just, it wasn't new hires there that they had. They had supervisors there. The supervisors did not stop anything. They actually contributed to removing me. You can see the three stripes on his arm.
You were set up. They did the same thing to me. They had the top three guys in the sheriff's department, and they were back there, similar to your case, talking with the lawyer, and basically like, "Oh, he took his mask off. Can we arrest him now? Can we arrest him now?" They were just waiting for a moment. So, I think you were set up.
You may have those thoughts, but keep it to yourself. Keep it to yourself.
Yeah, keep your speech to yourself.
Keep it to yourself, Mr. White Man, supremacist guy.
I guess this is a free speech thing, but don't have free speech.
Right, only us.
If you don't like what you have to say, we're gonna drag you out of there. Do these people have no self-awareness? Do they understand?
Not at all.
It's sort of like when a child grows up in an abusive home and they hate it so much that they become an abuser and the cycle's perpetuated. This is what I see. They're fixated so much on the past that they're actually modeling that on their societies and it's sick. They need help, you know?
Yeah, she actually had, that woman actually has a nonprofit set up. So it'd be interesting to see uh what's going through there and for what. So I haven't researched it, but it'd be interesting.
Well, I'd invite her to come on my show, I'd love to have a conversation with her. I've interacted with people all over the world, you know, she, she doesn't intimidate me. In fact, if anything, I wanna remind her of humanity, her humanity. And you need to be more kind and gentle and accepting of people. That's what I'd love to say to her. Tell me, Jeremy, how has this affected you and your family emotionally, legally, financially, and I, and I know it's early on, but?
Uh, certainly. So we're only having Thursdays or Fridays, there's only Monday and Tuesday, we're only five days in. Um, the phone hasn't stopped, the commenting hasn't stopped. Uh, people have been posting one star reviews on my Google for my business. I mean, just completely bashing, you saw, calling me white supremacist, saying that I'm hateful and just a nasty person. They don't know anything about me, they don't know what I do for this community. But so many people do. Like I said, last year, my, or year before, I guess it was, my son's school, their AC broke down and we went, um, that morning when I dropped him off, I was like, it's hot in here. And they said, yeah, our AC broke and they don't know when the AC guy's coming. So I went and got window units and put in every classroom in the school, not just my son's classroom. I put them in every classroom in that school until they could get their ACs fixed. You know, we have um the hurricanes that came through and smashed us up so bad the last couple of years. And we went and bought pallets of water, a full price. They wouldn't even give us the discount, even though we were taking it to the, the hurricane relief. Made ready to hot to eat meals, packaged up and delivered it um to the coast. And, you know, I do that for anyone, even the people that bash me online about my beliefs. It doesn't matter, when it comes time for that, everyone gets help and everyone gets love. And you never see those people turning down my help when it's time for my help. So that, I kinda find funny, but you know, I'm such an evil person, right?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're despicable, I mean.
I'm despicable.
A white supremacist.
So I own Gator Plumbing and Bath located out of Newberry. I'm a small, like I said, family owned and operated, it's me and a helper, one truck and trailer. Focus on, on residential service for the most part. There's a couple of commercial people that I take care of their plumbing as well. Uh, from bathroom remodels, repiping water heaters, anything that you need for your house, we take care of. And I'm on every single job doing the work myself, so I put, I put me into every job, so.
Okay, so if you're in the Gainesville area, you believe in free speech, if you believe that all races are equal, that it should be judged by the content of your character, not the color of your skin, here's your plumber, give them a good review. And if you're a lefty watching this, don't leave a bad review, just know that turnabout's fair play. Kudos to you for speaking out, and I'm sorry for the impact on your family. I know all about that, because doing this has been really hard on our family, but we decided we're gonna confront this evil head on.
Head on.
And I know how it is, all the media comes to you, you start getting doxxed, threatened. Have you, have you received any threats?
Uh, received one, pretty decent threat, uh, that I need to watch going out in public because I deserve to be sliced up.
I'm gonna put that up on the screen. And it's not to dox anyone, because I don't share things that aren't, that they don't make public. And I don't encourage anyone to, to dox or harass this person. Be firm, but fair in your comments. She looks like she's young, for all I know, it could be a fake burner account, but.
It probably is a burner account of some weakling in town here, if I had to guess.
And here is the woman, by the way, who's caused all this drama. This is interesting, because your local news station says, Democrats say they aren't excusing Rockwell's comment on Hulk Hogan, but condemn death threats. I don't, have you made a death threat against her? I don't know what they're talking about.
Absolutely not, and everyone, they haven't shown any, everyone has condemned death threats for this, it's ridiculous. This all came up because she essentially cheered for the death of half of the country. Um, so it's, it would be absurd um to say that she should receive the same. They say, oh, no, it's not good what she said, but they always throw the butt in there. And they always come up with something else to, to push it to the side.
Do you think that Rockwell should resign?
Absolutely, without a doubt. If she, if she cared, if she cared for this county like she says she does, she would step down. It's, it's just putting a stain on the community, it's going to cost a ton of money to keep this thing going. If she would just step down, we could address the few other people that have violated rights and done questionable things. And um, it'd make it go a lot smoother. But to this point, as far as I know, she has not chosen to, to do the right thing for the people.
So have her comments fostered unity or division in the community? And I'm, I, I ask as a fool, so to speak, because I know the answer.
Oh, absolute division, she's created nothing but division.
Do you feel supported by groups like Parents Demanding Justice Alliance? And who else has come alongside you to, to help? I'd like to acknowledge them.
Y'all have been amazing. Uh, people can check out the Real Freedom Talk website, it's, it's a great place you can go share your story. Corey DeAngelis got me in contact with the Liberty Justice Center. They're going to bat, their lawyer Dean McGee has taken this on and he actually reached out to a local attorney. Jeff Childers is gonna take this on, he's taken on the school board before. And we think we have the right team in place to really make a change, make a difference and get some answers and some justice.
Yeah, I've talked to Corey a little bit on, online and Corey thinks for everything you're doing, you know, we're definitely on the same team. And I just wanna say, Corey, I'm, I'm sorry we didn't have space for you to talk at the, the presser on July fifteenth, but you know, I think other opportunities will come up. I really appreciate, because I'm not just an advocate, I'm one of the parents who was.
Absolutely.
Brutally targeted. And that gives me a, a lot of empathy for, for parents and it makes me wanna just fight harder.
I was nervous as, as heck going into that meeting, but Board Member Plavik, her speech where she spoke out about what was going on, gave me the confidence to really get up there and kinda focus and calm down a little bit. Because if she could do it, it gave me, it gave me, you know, the confidence that I needed. And the commissioner's letter just, I mean, showing that at the top level of education in Florida is, as he said, got my back. So they just don't know, they just don't know it's coming and, and we're not stopping. As, we're gonna get answers this time, it's not going away quietly.
Good, and I, I think that's a service to all of us who've endured this. And, you know, we are working hard trying to ask President Trump for an executive order, because we have people who, who have had lawyers and they, tens of thousands of dollars later, nothing's happened. Uh, unfortunately, some of these people are, are protected and they know how to game the system. Other people just don't have the resources to, to hire legal help. Would you support an executive order that vindicates and honors parents and provides some restitution for, for hard losses? Like losses of jobs, legal fees and things to defend themselves from, from the chilling effect that Garland produced? Would you support an EO like that?
Absolutely, lives have been destroyed, the, the people that's reached out and talked to me about losing everything, including yourself, losing their livelihood, having to move, losing their homes, losing everything other than their lives. We know that suicide rates went up drastically during COVID time. So even people lost their lives because of this. Something needs to happen, just because it's a school board and not, but the school board is weaponizing the justice system. So they were using the, the police to do this. And it came from, like you said, so yes, something needs to be done. What? I don't know, but hopefully we can get the answer.
It's got to stop and Commissioner Kamutzus, kudos to him, Andy Ogles, Representative Andy Ogles from Tennessee, Eli Crane from Arizona, Andy Biggs, Paul Gosar, Jim Jordan, and, and more are lining up all the time. When we come back, I'm gonna ask you, what would your message be to public officials who are still not involved in this issue or ignoring these parents? Everybody, I'm back with Jeremy. Jeremy, I'm gonna go ahead and play this video of your interaction and then we can wrap up with a few comments and, and things you might like to say.
Hello, I'm Jeremy, um, and I didn't actually expect to come and give a compliment, but it was very nice to hear Ms. Plavik's uh speech at the beginning about Rockwell. Um, she definitely needs to step down if she has a shred of integrity in her body. I also didn't expect to talk about the other ones, but Mitt Neely likes to post things suggesting that if you didn't care for Obama or Kamala, that you are a racist or a sexist. I thought here um in uh Olatro County, we were proud of strong, independent, diverse women. Um, and all I heard was certain attacking Plavik for having a diverse opinion on this board of what I would call an echo chamber. Um, people here stating that Plavik was placed by DeSantis. Um, clearly, I believe it, because this is an echo chamber that needed to be broke up with a fresh set of eyes. Uh, and I welcome dogs to come and I hope uh most of the city gets arrested. Um, Rockwell is clearly a progressive that is pushing um LGDP ideology on our schools. Um, and I'm glad that Vu brought up one of your proud LGBTQ members, Joel Sirby, which went to prison, I believe, right? Again, you don't speak for Newberry citizens, we wanna see him castrated and hung in the town square. So don't you talk about what us parents want, okay? You, you do not know what we want. Rockwell, you cheered for the death, death of MAGA. You don't have to be a member of MAGA, I'm not a member of MAGA, I have loved ones and friends that are.
Please don't interrupt him.
Yeah, don't. And you cheered for that, you didn't apologize, that's such backstepping. You're a PhD, aren't you a highly educated woman that knows the exact meaning behind her words? Aren't you? You know what you said and you should step down, you're a disgusting biohuman being.
I tried to delay it. Excuse me.
I need to stay to listen to everything else.
The deputy, can I get you? Wait just a second, Casey, I'm gonna ask him to, to remove. Sir, I'm gonna ask you to um be removed from the, from the auditorium. Okay, excuse me, sir. So to the deputy, um, our attorney asked us not to remove him.
Hang on just a second.
If you, if you would. Excuse me. So, so the attorney has asked, has, the attorney has. And the attorney said that he does not have to be removed. I'm going to say, ask you all to please be quiet.
I recommend that we take a recess. I'm gonna take a five minute recess.
This is our meeting, get out, get out, get out, get out, get out, get out, get out of our meeting. This is a school board meeting, he's a racist and he's accepting this foolishness. He's a white supremacist and put his ass out. Sister, stop, don't touch me, don't touch me, shut, shut the hell up and leave me alone. Get the hell out of here, get out, get out, go and tell him to leave. Why do you mind your damn business and leave me alone? Mind your business.
Man, what a fiasco. And you said something about how the background work that we've done has really helped in your situation.
For sure, if this, I'm, I'm, I'm certain if this would have happened back in the beginning of COVID, that it would have been a whole different outcome for me. And I fully anticipated this time even to just get bashed online and me go about my life with a bunch of hate going on, which has happened, I mean, I've gotten plenty of hate over this, what I would call a death threat. But there's the, the amount of people that has reached out, you, um, these other organizations, crazy amount of parents from across the country that have reached out, um, talking about going through the same thing. And I just, I see it being different this time, I really do, even though there are a lot of bad actors out there. Again, getting that letter from the Commissioner of Education by noon the next day. I think really just says how intertwined everyone is behind the scenes to make that happen. Because it just is crazy that it happened that quick. And people are saying that, like I said, that, that I got sent there, that I'm a plant. I've never had a conversation with any political figure before this moment. And they're saying that the speech was written, that letter was, was ready ahead of time. How's that possible when I was responding to what the board said in their opening statements? Because my, my entire plan was just to, to get into Rockwell for two minutes. But that board was so nasty and tore into Janine Plavik, um, the only one that spoke out against Rockwell on that board. Um, they, they just gave so much, so much to, to go after that needed to be addressed as well, so.
Every bit of this reeks of Marxism. In fact, I could show this to people at Epic Times or New Federal State of China who've experienced these things.
Some of these books, and I'll just do the elementary ones to keep it, to keep it short, is Melissa by Alex Gino. It normalizes porn via discussions about porn and dirty magazines, teaches hiding your browser history for gender reassignment searches, links to Trevor Project, inappropriate minor counseling, depicts secret transitioning, crossdressing and underwear swaps behind parents' back. A is for activist, which is Marxist alphabet book for youngest kids. Ends with Z is for zapatistas, hooray, promotes radical ideology. It feels good to be yourself by Teresa Thorne, teaches kids gender can change daily and yearly.
It feels good to be yourself and then have radical surgery to, to off your genital.
To not be yourself.
It's, it's absurd, it's absolutely patently absurd and it's nineteen eighty-four level stuff. Chloe Cole is, she's become a friend and she's a detransitioner and she talks about the horrors of this. And now suddenly Southern Poverty Law Center has put her down in as a, a member of a hate group or whatever designation they have.
Girls aren't allowed to be tomboys, it's like, like uh you can't love your father and wanna, you know, emulate your father or your brothers. Um, if you're, basically they're saying if you're not a floozy at a young age, that, oh, you must be trans. No, there's, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. And that's what happened with that young lady, was, you know, she was confused going through things or she was a tomboy. Um, and they told her, oh, well, actually you're trained, you're actually a boy. Uh, you know, you're just trapped in the wrong body. And now she's got a lifelong battle to try to get back to herself.
It's completely warped and things are inverted, as only Marxism does. And if you study it, in fact, I'm gonna suggest some really good books. Um, the Epic Times has this uh nine commentaries on the Communist Party. And then they have uh two books, this is volume two, The Spectre of Communism Is Ruling Our World. They're, they're easy reads and they talk about things that we're gonna see as patterns today, where they, the Marxists really break down societal mores, societal norms. And they, they use, it's not that they, they love homosexuals or transgender or whatever. It's a means to an end, because they wanna destabilize society. And what's happened, like in the case of Stalin, he re-legalized homosexuality. And then once he got the power, he started killing homosexuals. So people are falling into a trap. Beneath Sheep's Clothing by my friend Julie Beeling, excellent book, she made a documentary that's, that's fantastic on that. Matthew Lohmeyer, who's now under Secretary of the Air Force, uh, he wrote this book. I, I had him at Viva Coffee House, that's how long ago it was to speak. He got dismissed from the military for exposing Marxism and now he's in a, in a, in a top spot. So in, in all of this, you know, I, I gotta say that this is a book called Unrestricted Warfare, obviously not the original Chinese, it's a reprint. But this is a book written by two Chinese colonels back in nineteen ninety-something, I forget what it was. But it outlines the plan of the People's Liberation Army and the Chinese Communist Party to take down the United States. And they're very patient, it's a hundred year plan. They use social engineering as, as a weapon. They hire these people to sit in a room, make pig profiles, act like they're Americans, so division, so racism, so hatred. And so this, these people in this school board meeting, they don't realize it, but they've been duped, they're pawns of this. And if you look at Marxism, if you look at communism, communism has killed more people, committed more democide, which is murder of your own populations than any other ideology. It's millions. So I, I just wanna say, you're, you're doing something great. I know it's stressful, it's stressful on my family. When I showed a video of that first arrest to some Chinese dissidents who moved to escape that, they said, I can't believe that's happening in America. And it's, it's a warning, because you shouldn't be experiencing what you experienced, I shouldn't be experiencing what I experienced. But people think, oh, it's a good old USA, like we're so solid. Communism has already infiltrated so deeply. And one of the main dangers of it, Jeremy, is that people like some of the people in that room, they are carrying water for this and they truly believe they're doing the right thing and that's very dangerous. There's a war for our children right now, this is what Sam Sarbo talks about, it's why she's trying to get kids out of the public schools. The public schools have become indoctrination centers, churches have been infiltrated by the American Communist Party. It's all by design. So I just, I want, I wanna thank you, I wanna invite you to keep helping to educate people about this, keep fighting the good fight. And I just wanna thank you for standing tall, two inches taller than me even. Thank you for being a strong voice. It's a badge of honor to be called these names, as the Bible says, to be persecuted for righteousness sake, that, that's an honorable thing. So thank you for doing what you've been doing. You, you have our support, we'll be fighting for you. As you know, I've expressed to you that it's difficult, it's frustrating when you have the slow wheels of government turning, you have some people in positions to help who seem to be lacking the motivation or they put you off or passed the buck. Some of those people weren't there for those of us who experienced this early on. Some of them aren't doing anything. I have to give props to people who are though, there's an increasing number of people in positions of authority who are saying, we see this now, we're gonna get behind these people, which I, I, I think is great. You know, I know that Harmeet Dhillon cares about it, Ed Martin, Vince Haley, people in the Department of Education are aware of it. What would your message be to public officials who are still ignoring this? What would your message be to public officials who are still ignoring this or putting it at the back of the priority list? How important is this issue and what would you like to say to them?
It is one of the most important issues that we are facing. Liberalism has taken over our schools. And without a serious restructure and some sort of balancing, where we get rid of that, I don't, how do, how do you get out of it? I mean, you have people that are in the school system from daycare, you know, as soon as their parents go back to. As soon as your mom goes back to work because liberalism took women out of the household. Uh, now families are broke up and it, they've just taken over every bit of education all the way through college. And the people that are in charge of education are the most highly educa- indoctrinated, educated people that are out there. Um, they've done really nothing in real life except for been in college for, you know, been in the education system for what, twenty years? By the time you go through pre-K or kindergarten through 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 college. Um, and it's just liberal everywhere. You're not allowed to be Republican or conservative or just not extremist left wing. You're not allowed to be. Teachers have been persecuted for it. So unless that gets balanced out, I don't know.
It's urgent and it's more important than people might realize. And, you know, I think it was important to examine the J six issue and pardon the people who really didn't do anything. But but this issue is different because it really, it's not a one-time event. It's still ongoing. It strikes at the heart of who we are as a people. It's about indoctrinating our children. So I I was really glad. My wife and I fostered a two-year-old boy. That's a great story. While his mother was unjustly imprisoned. We're so glad the J six people got some amount of justice, but at the same time, my wife texted me the day that they got their pardon and said, I'm so happy for Felicia. And and all these other people that we know. She said, but I'm 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 crying because I'm hoping someday maybe we'll get that, maybe our situation will get addressed. Because our situation's been every bit as bad as as some of the J sixers, not all of them. Fortunately, I wasn't thrown in the Gulag, but it is really important. That's one of the reasons what you talked about and the march of Marxism and using ignorance and moral breakdown. Is part and parcel of why I started Freedom Talk Magazine back in, I think it was twenty twenty-one. And it's the Journal of Truth and Virtue because we have to bring truth back to the public square. We have to promote virtue. Truth is the greatest weapon against Marxism. Virtue, living a right life. Uh, and and you say, how how do we live a right life? Well, some people would say the Bible and that's, yeah, I I agree with that. But also you look at societal norms over time. This woke revolution is so far outside of human history. And human norms and socially acceptable practices, it really is a war. You don't even have to use the Bible to show that it is. It's it's a terrible ideology. So this is actually the cover I'm working on for the August issue, really centering on this topic. I'm relaunching it after two month hiatus because I've been working so hard on this this parenting issue. So watch for that to come out. But Jeremy, thank you so much. You're you're a warrior, you're a fighter. I'm sure we'll have you back, Jeremy.
Yes, sir. Sounds great. I appreciate it. You have a good one.
Talk to you soon.